Ah, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if you could, please stand and uh send a pledge of allegiance along with with me. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Nick, the Vice Chairman, you must know it by heart.
Mr. Chairman, you would think at this point that I would have memorized, uh but I don't, so I'm gonna read it. And uh maybe someday I'll wake up in a cold sweat, uh having having memorized most of it. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, and the Governor's March fifteenth, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Burlington Board Selectmen is being conducted for your promote participation. In-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and or view this meeting while in progress is broadcast on BCAT Government Cable Division, BCAT Government Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda for our WebEx Cisco online meeting, or via phone at four zero eight four one eight nine three eight eight, meeting number one two nine two four seven eight eight seven five. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment, by commenting on the BCAT Government Coverage Facebook Live page, the chat function on WebEx Virtual Meeting, or via telephone at seven eight one two seven zero one six three five. Thank you.
And Mr. Priest, just a quick housekeeping, uh two quick housekeeping issues before we go on um. Agenda item one oh six, the public hearing on Del Frisco's, that was originally uh continued to May twenty fourth, so it will not be on tonight's agenda, that's May twenty fourth. And uh we will be moving uh item one oh nine up in the meeting so that all the participants who want to participate uh will be able to, you know, chime in, we'll take it from there. Uh with that being said, uh item number ninety-nine, appointments, Mr. Sagorino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, tonight we have Deputy Chief Brown here uh for a couple promotions in our police department.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino, and congratulations, Mr. Tegus, on the chairmanship. Um, so we have two names that are gonna be um put forward for promotion tonight. Uh, you have Detective Matt Kramer and Officer Bill Trelligan. And before I get into the background on each of the officers, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about um the testing process so that the board has an idea of what we've gone through here. This is the third time that we have given this test. It's a written exam that's given uh from a company called McCann Associates out of Langhorne, Pennsylvania. This most recent exam was administered back on February eighth, two thousand twenty-one. And uh when we get the score and report back, we had twelve of our officers take this exam. And when we get the score report back, we get a normative uh data compilation that uh compares our candidates with the national average. And on this most recent exam, I'm happy to note that we averaged six point two points above everybody else uh na- national on this exam. And we averaged twelve points above the uh national average on legal knowledge, and eight and a half points above the national average on actual ability uh as they tested within the uh parameters of the exam. Um, both of the officers you're gonna hear about tonight have consistently scored well on this exam. Uh, they've made the interviews on every ti- uh each time we've done this process, and I am extremely happy to um put their names forward tonight to Mr. Sagorino. Uh, with that said, the first one is going to be Detective Matt Kramer. Matt has served with the police department since two thousand four, most recently as a detective. From two thousand four to two thousand eighteen, he served as a patrolman and a field training officer, training our incoming probationary officers where he evaluated them and ensured adherence to department standards and best practices to the point they were ready for solo patrol assignments. Uh, Matt has done very well in that assignment to the point that we tasked him with an unenviable task of retraining a veteran officer who had a break in service um uh some time ago, who was actually senior to Matt. And Matt was able to rehab that officer and make him uh road-ready again for solo patrol assignments. Um, he's also served as the department's court liaison officer from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, representing the department in show cause hearings, preparing evidence for trial and working with the Middlesex District Attorney's Office. He was assigned to detectives in two thousand twenty. In that role, he investigated felonies and misdemeanors. He's interviewed witnesses, he's collected evidence, and been involved in many um high-stakes crimes uh in investigations here with the Police Department. Matt is a Burlington native. He's the son of George and Barbara Kramer. George Kramer is a retired lieutenant from the Burlington Fire Department. Uh Sergeant Kramer is also a two thousand graduate of Burlington High School, and he graduated from Middlesex Community College in Bedford where he earned an associate's degree in criminal justice, and he is now um was uh pursuing his bachelor's degree in criminal justice as well. Um, he lives with his wife Katie and their daughter Bridgette, and I'm very happy to put Matt's name forward to Mr. Sagorino for uh promotion to the rank of sergeant.
Thank you, Deputy. Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Chief Brown. Uh, the only thing I'd like to add is uh for the board is um I've had the opportunity to interview both of these gentlemen a couple times now, and I can just tell you um the amount of effort um that they've put into uh their promotions has just been outstanding. Um, it's like night and day. Uh, people go through the interview process the first time, and and I think they learn a lot, and they figure out areas that they need to improve on. And I can honestly say from both uh perspective of both of these gentlemen, um it was extremely noticeable to someone in my position just to sort of understand how much work they put in uh from the first time to this time, and uh that's all I have to say uh for both candidates. And uh for this one right now, uh with Deputy Chief Brown's recommendation, I appoint Matthew Kramer uh to the position of sergeant of for the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
Do I have that motion?
Second. Bob, Bob made the motion, it's on you.
All right, motion by Mr. Hogan, second by Mr. Morandi. Uh, we have to do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Selectman Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, five zero zero. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, uh why don't we do vote, and then we'll just do a brief discussion after? Is that okay?
Uh, absolutely. Uh, Deputy Chief Brown?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, so the next name up for appointment is Officer William Trelligan. Um, Bill has served with the Burlington Police Department since two thousand thirteen. Uh, I'm sorry, since two thousand eight, and most recently since two thousand thirteen, he's been assigned to the Traffic Division. As a patrolman in traffic, he's been involved in patrols, investigations, and public education. He's also served as a field training officer for the department. Um, he's also worked as an arson investigator, coordinating with the Burlington Fire Department and State Fire Marshal Office. Uh, since two thousand eighteen, he served as a legal certified legal instructor with the Municipal Police Training Committee, instructing new recruits in criminal procedure and criminal law, and I've had the pleasure of teaching alongside Billy in uh three of the major academies here, Reading, Lowell, and NECC, and Haverly, and he does an outstanding job. I would be remiss if I didn't mention his uh ability as the union president coming out of the Patrolman's Association now. Uh, he has done more to advance um positive work relationships and um positive work conditions here at the police department as the president of the union, and he should be commended for that as well. Bill is a Burlington native. He's the son of Frank and Armel Trelligan, and is a two thousand two graduate of Burlington High School. He received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from UMass Lowell in oh five, and then a master's degree from UMass Lowell in two thousand six. Uh, his brother Colin has been recently promoted to sergeant as well in Tewksbury for the Tewksbury buildings in Burlington, whose his wife Liz and their three children, and I'm very happy to recommend Bill to the position sergeant.
Uh, thank you, Tom. I'm with the Deputy Chief's recommendation. I appoint William Trelligan to the position of sergeant uh for the Burlington Police Department and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
So moved.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Priest, second by Mr. Morandi. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Selectman Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well, five zero zero. Okay, we will, I'm sure everybody has comments uh they'd like to make regarding these two uh excellent choices. Uh, I'll start with the Vice Chair, Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, to both sergeants, congratulations. Um, you know, I think that uh we time and again, you know, find ourselves in positions where um we have to make the difficult choice of uh, you know, picking best over better. Um, you know, as as Deputy Chief Brown stated, you know, with our our rankings being as as high as they are compared to the national average, so um, you know, I guess I'll I'll simply say that um I wish you both the best in your careers. I look forward to following your careers, uh, you know, moving forward. Um, and I think that people at Burlington are lucky to have you serving them uh in 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 town, so congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Uh, Selectman Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, congratulations to both of the, to the nominees here and the new sergeants. Um, to to start making your way through the ranks is important, and having made such a significant impact uh for this speaks volumes for you and the others uh who are gonna be moving up the ladder with you, and it becomes more difficult at each level. Uh, I know Matt's father, uh were both Vietnam vets. He uh, he and I worked very well together during the time that the moving wall was here, and uh I can only say that uh uh it it as proud as as George was at the work he does, I know Matt is as proud doing his, so congratulations, Matt, and also congratulations, Billy.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Uh, Selectman Runyon?
Yep, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, it always by far the uh the best part of this job is when we have an opportunity to either hire or promote um uh these young men and women to uh various positions within town, so um, congratulations to both uh Matt and Bill. I've known them both for quite a quite a few years now, um especially Matt. Uh, you know, Bob mentioned his uh, his father George was on the fire department, and I and I had the good fortune to work with George for quite a few years. Uh, we used to bring Matt to the little uh, when he was really small, to the little Christmas parties and so forth, so he's uh, he's come a long way, and uh again, uh thrilled for both of you fellas, and um the best of luck in your in your careers going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Morandi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, guys, just wanna say congratulations. I think everyone's already been said, um, you know, two great choices. Um, seeing you go through the ranks, all the coming in as patrolmen and moving all the way up to sergeant, who knows where you're going from there. Uh, very happy that we have the ability to take offices, you know, uh that are smart, intelligent, and test well, and we, this this town keeps growing with just that alone. But my biggest thing is, Matt, where's the little one? You already left already? I love watching the kids, they're just great, and I'm so glad that the families are involved in this. This is very nice to see the families out there, and hi, little girls, I don't know what their names are, but they're awesome. Billy, they're right there, right, just keeps sucking her thumb and playing with her fingers, and the little boy keeps running around like a madman. Yeah, we might have to get a fund ready for him, I don't know, but congratulations, congratulations to both guys. Matt, Bill, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. I'll just get a couple of words, and then I'll turn it over to either one if they wanted to say anything. Uh, Matt, I also want to acknowledge you, your years of service with uh the MLEC SWAT team. Um, I know you've gone on many, many uh intense calls over the years, and um, I'm not sure if the deputy mentioned that or not, but uh I know, thank you for your service on that. I'm sorry, Sergeant Kramer. Well, congratulations, Matt, and uh Bill, Sergeant Trelligan, congratulations. I just don't know what it's gonna be like being the older brother and the newer sergeant, if your brother's gonna you know, have a little fun with that, but congratulations as well. I'll keep my uh brief. Uh, Sergeant Kramer, would you like to uh say anything?
No, you know, I just wanna say thank you to everybody. Uh, obviously, Chief Kent, uh Deputy Chief Brown, Board Selectmen, uh Mr. Sagorino, everybody that's supported us throughout this whole process. It's been a, been a long journey, but it's been worth it. You know, my seventeen years here for Burlington PD, I've had the chance to to learn from some of the best commander and patrol, and I I just hope that going forward, I can be that example for the younger officers going forward, so they can move move through that law enforcement, law enforcement journey uh with the the example, with examples like the ones that I had, so I'm looking forward to getting going and getting the ground running.
Thank you, Sergeant Kramer. Sergeant Trelligan?
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the chief and deputy chief, uh Mr. Sagorino and the board uh for putting faith and uh trusting me into this position. I'm certainly gonna uh do everything that I can to keep advancing this department as we start to move forward. And uh that that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Trelligan. Okay, gentlemen, again, congratulations. Um and we'll be moving on the agenda. Uh, item one hundred is approval for holding both live and virtual town meetings. Uh, Mrs. Warfield, are you speaking on that?
Um, I believe that Bill Byer was also
There he is, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see him, that's why. Uh, Mr. Byer, Tom Aurea, floor is yours.
Well, good evening, all. Uh, yes, uh, town meeting is upon us, and since we're still dealing with the pandemic, we are still looking at having a remote town meeting, uh and in order to do this, um I guess we need you folks to approve it. So we have, we've set up a meeting that that meets the standards that we need to need to go by. Um, it's going to be run the same way we ran the the January town meeting, which which went pretty well, and uh actually not much more to say about that than that. We'll uh, um, we just need you guys to sign off on it, and uh well, Amy's doing all the work, so then we'll be ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Byer. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, do we just take it from here, or?
Uh, yes, um, uh, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any further questions, uh Amy and Bill are both here. Um, I I believe uh Betty may have emailed out a motion uh for the board to consider. Uh, if anyone wants to, uh, if you're done uh with questions, if anyone wants to make that motion, I think that will be uh the next, the next step.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Gentlemen, if uh you have any questions, please raise your hand. I don't wanna have to call, you know, go on everyone and and have them say they don't have anything. Does anybody have any questions on this? Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, because I I uh tuned into the last uh town meeting via uh Facebook and not via WebEx, how how was voting handled?
Mrs. Warfield?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we will use the WebEx polling that uh WebEx has available in it, and so each of the articles um are um presented to all the voter, to to all the town meeting members, and then those in the breakout rooms. Uh, we have a deputy moderator assigned to each one of those rooms, and they take a vote in those rooms and then report them back to uh Mr. Byer, and then all of the votes are tabulating together.
Excellent. Thank you, Amy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Anybody else have questions from the board or comments? Seeing none, uh looking for a motion on this to approve?
I'm happy to make the motion that we uh approve the request from the town moderator and town clerk to hold all sessions of the May twenty twenty-one town meeting, both live and virtual online, with the town meeting starting date being May tenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morandi. Roll call vote, uh Vice Chairman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan? Got a yes? Okay. Uh, Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Selectman Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. Five zero zero, Betty. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, item one oh one, approval for the Nordblom Nordblom Water Agreement. Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this next agenda item is the culmination of a long discussion with the Nordblom Company that began over ten years ago under Town Administrator Bob Mercier. Uh, when we became aware that one-four dioxide levels uh began to rise in the Vine Brook Aquifer, uh the primary site identified through scientific modeling as causing the issue was owned by the Nordblom Company. Uh, we worked cooperatively uh with the Nordblom team here over the next several years as it was suggested that the one-four dioxide problem would reverse itself over time. Uh, that unfortunately did not materialize, and as you know, we ultimately shut down three wells out of an abundance of caution and well before one-four dioxide limits were nearing prohibited levels. Uh, the shutdown of these wells caused us a loss of one million gallons per day production. At this point, we had to intensify our discussions with the property owner as the issue was now affecting our ability uh to produce enough water to meet the town's needs. Uh, through substantial collaboration and negotiation, we're able to come to this agreement uh which we think is a fair and reasonable resolution to address this issue. Uh, the key points of the uh the agreement are as follows. Uh, the town will receive twenty-three annual payments of a hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars uh starting January fifteenth, uh twenty twenty-two. Uh, that's for a total of uh four million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. Uh, as I previously mentioned, uh due to the shutdown of the wells, we lost the ability to produce approximately uh one million gallons per day. Uh, this total payment equates to the entrance fee that we will pay to the MWRA over time uh for the use of one million gallons a day. So there is some logic as to how we arro- uh arrived at that sum. Um, next part of the agreement is the town agrees to discontinue the use of the Vine Brook Treatment Plant uh when Phase Two A of the MWRA project is complete, uh but no later than one-one, twenty twenty-six. Uh, just as a reminder, Phase Two A is the big pipe that will be building between Adams Street and the Arlington Town Line through Lexington. Uh, our plan, uh as everyone is aware, was to discontinue the use of this plant uh when the MWRA connection was complete anyway, as uh we do not believe that this is a clean uh supply of water uh due to the prior contamination and increasingly uh more stringent federal and state guidelines. Uh, the next important part of the agreement is that the town uh agrees to attempt to formally abandon the Vine Brook Africa Aquifer uh by applying to the Department of Environmental Protection for permission for that. Uh, we're not yet sure what this entails or if we are allowed to do so, uh but we do agree to attempt this for the same reason as I mentioned previously. Uh, we do not think that this is a good water source uh for the town going forward. Uh, the next section, uh the town agrees uh to not object to Nordblom's petition to the DEP uh to discontinue its requirement to pump and treat the groundwater at Northwest Park. Uh, they are currently under a DEP order to pump groundwater, uh treat it, and then they put it back in the ground, you know, theoretically uh treating contaminants in the water before it reaches our well field. Uh, this system would no longer have benefit to us since we don't intend to use this source of water in the future. Uh, of course, before we get to questions, um I would like to add a couple of thank yous at this time. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to thank the board uh for your unwavering support for the administration during this long process. Uh, we had a lot of ups and downs over the years, and with your guidance, we were able to make it through to this point. Uh, I'd also like to thank uh John Sanchez, as always. Uh, his textual technical expertise in this subject matter was invaluable to our team. Um, although he never wishes to be thanked, I would also like to thank uh Bob Buckley, Attorney Bob Buckley, who was extremely helpful uh in keeping this conversation uh moving forward over a long period of time. Um, he was not working for either side at the time. He was referred to as role as being that of an unpaid facilitator. Uh, we're very grateful uh that he was able to keep us on track. I would also uh like to offer a very special thanks uh to Mr. Peter Nordblom. Uh, this was a a very long and difficult negotiation uh with plenty of disagreement. And uh whenever we reached an impasse, Mr. Nordblom uh got involved, and we're able to keep the discussion moving forward in a positive direction, so I wanted to acknowledge him specifically uh for his assistance in in putting this agreement together. Uh, and with that, Mr. Chairman, uh we're open for questions. Uh, John Sanchez uh should be here in the room someplace, and uh we can pick any additional questions the board uh may have. Uh, this 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 agreement, as you know, has been reviewed uh by town council since our last hour, our last discussion in executive session, so there are no changes since that time.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. If I show hands, members of the board who have a question, comment, or concern regarding this, I I uh, Mr. Morandi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so being on the board for six years, moving on now, this has been going on since I got here. Uh, and I just wanna congratulate Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Sagorino, uh the board itself, past board members that have all been involved in this ongoing litigation for the water. Uh, great job, everybody involved. I can't tell you how good it is to be relieved that this is over with and done. Uh, the town made out very, very well with this, so congratulations, guys, and let's move on to the next item with with that property.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Uh, Vice Chairman Priest, I acknowledge you had a comment, but uh, Mr. Sagorino, Patricia O'Brien would like you to repeat a certain section. Patricia, uh was that section four? Mr. Sagorino, condition number four, or I'm sorry, not condition, uh, item number four that you read.
Okay, one second here.
Having to do with not objecting.
Okay. Okay, the town agrees to not object uh to Nordblom's petition to the DEP uh to discontinue its requirement uh to pump and treat the groundwater at Northwest Park. Uh, they are currently under a DE order to pump groundwater, treat it, and put it back into the ground, uh theoretically treating contaminants in the water before it reaches our well field. Uh, this system would no longer have benefit to us since we don't intend to use this water uh source in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Um, Mr. Hogan or Runyon, do you have a question or comment on this?
Just just to comment if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly.
Um, I I I also wanna make sure that uh the past three town administrators uh who all were very involved in this uh from the get-go, and uh just like Joe, even when I came on board, this was already in the full uh uh full-blown uh crisis issues. Um, it took a lot of work, John Sanchez, Bob Buckley, uh great people to have on on either side uh in order to get this going, so I I I'm glad we finally got to the to the end line on this one, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, just gonna echo what what Joe and Bob have already said. Uh, I again, uh John Sanchez, just an outstanding job. I mean, uh, he he truly, truly um um believes in in what he does. He he protects our water supply like it's his uh, like it's his, one of his, his children. Uh, take take my word on that, 'cause we try to get some access to the uh reservoir up there, and it's impossible. But um, yeah, it's been a long, uh it's been a long, long negotiation. Uh, I'm I'm glad we've got the ball uh over the goal line and look forward to moving on and making that MWRA connection, but great job, everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Uh, Mr. Sanchez, apparently if you do have a child, we're gonna name him H two O, so um but um, again, I wanna thank you. I know I was sitting in on a few of the meetings, and it's been a long road. And the way I look at it, we're one day closer to no more water bans, so uh it it's so small steps, baby steps, but we're getting there. Mr. Sanchez, did you wanna chime in at all?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only thing that I will I will add is that uh uh, and I'm glad that Bob uh mentioned this about the former uh town administrators, but uh same with Paul. I mean, he's gonna, he's not gonna thank himself, but he he has been instrumental to push this through. Uh, it's it's taken us some time to get here with the revised agreements and the conditions, but uh there's been a lot of uh attorney phone calls and going back and forth, and uh uh and I think that you should recognize that Paul actually carried uh this load uh and 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 I thank for that, because um I just looking at the timeline, we started this in two thousand and eleven, so this is going on ten years. Uh, so it's nice to see it coming into to uh uh temporary end, if I wanna call it to that. I mean, we still have a long road to go with the MWRA, but uh again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Um, with that, yes, Mr. Priest?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, thank you. This is probably to uh you, Mr. Sanchez. Um, the the attempt to abandon, what is what does that process look like?
So, uh as we as we spoke at our meeting when we So, uh, as we, as we spoke at our meeting when we get the project approved in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the idea is that we will no longer use the Vinebrook Trim Facility for affordable drinking water. And the reason for that is not only the current contaminants that we have, but also. The uh, emerging contaminants that we seem to get every couple of years from the EPA, which um, at, at the time. And even today, I believe it was the smartest way for us to actually abandon that as our water source. So uh, there will be a procedure uh, through the E P on, on abandoning those wells. Uh, you just can't keep them active unless you're using them. Uh, so uh, we're not gonna do that for the next few years because we still need the trim facility. Uh, and as we stated at our meeting, even after we connect. On this phase two A project that we're currently almost going out the bit. We will want to have at least one year of transition to make sure that everything is what it's supposed to be. So uh, that's why the dates that you heard, uh, I think it's two thousand and twenty-six, I believe, Paul, you said that. Uh, for that reason, we want to make sure that we have enough time to make sure that we can actually proceed with our plan. So uh, again, it will probably include some kind of a D E P some middles at that time.
Okay, um, let, let's just say for the sake of hypotheticals. In twenty years, there's some miraculous breakthrough in science with regards to cleaning water. And we say, my gosh, we could reopen the wells. Is that something that would be possible at that time? Like, like when you have abandoned a well. You know, the, the, the possibility of going back to it, is that closed forever? Or is there? You know, uh, an opportunity to reopen a well, should the opportunity be available?
So uh, so to, to open a well, uh, wells do die. I mean, so wells don't last forever. So even the wells that we currently have, in the future, the town will probably have to abandon those and dig new wells. Nearby or somewhere around there. So yeah, the opportunity to drill new wells is available uh, at any time. You have to permit them. Um, you know, as, as we did with the last two, ten or eleven, which the town did uh, the last time around, we had to actually permit those separately. So it'll be a permanent process to get them approved uh, at the time. Again, twenty years from now or thirty, I mean, it's, I mean, we, we don't know, all right? But if there was that ability and all of a sudden the, the aquifer is pristine and clean, the town can go through a process to. To uh, make him, to open them again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Uh, anything further from the board before I look for an approval on this? Seeing none, I'll be looking for that motion for an approval. Mr. Runyon? You're muted, Mike.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm making the motion.
Okay, motion's made by Mr. Runyon, who have a second? Second by Mr. Morandi. Low call vote to approve the Nord Blum Water Agreement. Uh, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Selectman Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, five zero zero, Betty. Okay, thank you, gents. Uh. Mr. Sagorino, item number one oh two, intermunicipal agreement.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the next item up is we have a draft intermunicipal agreement uh, with the town of Lexington. Uh, which covers all aspects of the pipe uh, that we will be building through Lexington as part of our M W R A project. Uh, this is a fairly standard agreement uh, which we wanted to provide the board for comment. Uh, in the meantime, uh, we will also be bringing this to the Lexington Select Board. Uh, for their input and hopefully approval, and then we'll bring it back to you to finalize it and vote it in its final form. Uh, so what we would ask you to do is read through it and provide us with any uh, comments uh, or questions. Uh, prior to us bringing it back from the town of Lexington. Uh, it's a fairly standard agreement and it covers sort of uh, those type of issues like what happens if there's a water break in the new pipe? Who responds? Uh, what type of pipe are we putting it in? Uh, do we meet Burlington's design standards? Who's paying for what? Um, those type of things. Uh, any issue related to the pipe that we're building to Lexington? And how, you know, we may have to handle or administer a problem or share the costs on something uh, would be covered by this agreement.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sanchez is here. If uh, I'm not sure if he wants to add anything uh, additional to that.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Mr. Sanchez?
Uh, the, the only thing that I will say is that uh, just reiterate that the agreement is on the draft form. Uh, you know, typically, uh, as we've done before with some of the other intermunicipal agreements, we do go back and forth with the other towns. On definitions that we might have not thought about or that they want something addressed differently. So uh, so this is an opportunity to uh, hear from you before we actually start going uh, to Lexington. Uh, although we have worked with the staff um, in Lexington, we also have to work through their select board.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Um, gentlemen, it, it, this is the beginning of this process. That's the draft of the, uh, of the agreement. So obviously it's gonna come back to us for approval at some point. So do we have any questions or comments at this point, at this point of the uh, item? Anybody have, just raise your hand if you, Mr. Priest?
Just one quick initial comment, uh, question rather. Um, is, is this commonplace for town? I mean, it, it, I have to imagine that at a certain point it is, especially in a, in more densely packed areas. Um, I guess the, the, the crux of the question is, um, you know, do we, do we model this off of other intermunicipal agreements?
Uh, Mr. Sanchez?
So, also the answer is yes. Uh, we've worked with our town council and they pretty much take uh, given that they were using another community. Uh, it is, it is sort of common. I mean, when Wilmington uh, connected to the M W R A, they did it through Woburn. Some of the communities in Peabody, they have, have to go through all the towns. It's very common that this happens, whether it is for water or sewer. So there's a template and you work from that template.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Good. Gentlemen, any other further questions at this point? You know, we all have to take it in and absorb it. Okay, I see nothing further. Mr. Sagorino, what you gonna bring this back in another meeting, correct?
Uh, yes, and again, if any of the board members have any questions or comments, once it's, once you've had a chance to digest, uh, please do reach out to us and we'll. Um, either discuss it with you or see if it can be incorporated into the agreement. Again, we still have to bring it through Lexington, get their comments as well. So. It's gonna be a, a working document for a while.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Um, okay, we'll move on. We're actually gonna take a, an agenda item out of order. We'll go to uh, item number one oh nine. That's the update and approval of the zoning article. Uh, I believe Ms. Kastner has a presentation.
I do. Good evening. Uh, I know Melissa Tentaklas is here too, and thank you for taking out of order to accommodate. Um, her schedule, having to jump on another meeting at seven. So um. With that, um, I'm gonna bring up a presentation if I can share.
Certainly.
Give me a second here. Okay, so, um, thank you all. I know you guys have reviewed the warrant already, but. Um, and set the warrant and just wanted to give you guys a little bit of uh, um, a presentation just on the kind of backup background. Um, the reason why we're taking the actions we are in terms of um, Article thirty-three to amend. Um, the zoning map to rezone a number of properties into um, kind of clusters of properties, which I'm gonna go through. We also have a parking structure and garages, which um, I'm not gonna go through tonight, but happy to answer any questions. All of this, the presentation that you're gonna see is on the town meeting website already. And I'm working with Amy to do a presentation that we can post on that website as well. So. Here we go. So kind of why, how did we get here? Um, as you guys have been very involved with and, you know, I think this is a good segue actually from. The, the water discussion of ten years in the process. I think we're here because of the last ten years and because of a lot of the. Um, decisions we've been making um, since and opportunities we've been able to capture since um, you know, starting two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. With some of the planned development districts, notably Northwest Park in two thousand and seven, um, two thousand and eight happened. Um, and we continued to do planning for growth. There was a big push for planning for growth. And how can we take that moment to reposition ourselves um, optimally so we can take advantage of. The, you know, funding opportunities that are around us at the time. If you guys remember, um, two thousand. Uh, two thousand and nine, pretty much, we had the Recovery and Reinvestment Act under the Obama administration. We had Planning for Growth of the State. There was a bunch of um, infrastructure money that was out there so we could, you know, planning for growth. Um, as we, you know, rezone Northwest Park, how do we see that happen? And then by two thousand and thirteen, because of a lot of those actions we took. Uh, we really saw things, um, you know, happen quickly and um, we were able to remobilize quickly. Um, and I think that was much of, because of the opportunity we took at that time. So um, just in general, uh, two thousand and seventeen, um, you know, we kind of, we have Millipore. Um, okay, they're here, they're big, they're a big fish, you know, what happens? When we got Sun, it was like Sun and Oracle and everybody. You know, came running into Burlington with um, uh, under, you know, software, software security. And it was, okay, what, what is it? What is it about Burlington? Why are we not on the map? Um, so two thousand and nineteen, we did a bunch of changes. Um, to, you know, again, how do we catch this ten billion dollar industry in, in Burlington? Um, we did changes to put us on the map. We did it um, mass bio. We were rated platinum up from bronze, which was a huge change. Twenty twenty, it was, okay, how do we, you know, what else do we need to do to get this to happen? Um, we did some text amendments with the I H and we did three rezonings at the time, Azor at sixty Blanchard, which they're there, there's. Uh, I think they're almost ready to start production, three hundred Summit. We have a um, two hundred and, two hundred, uh. Let's say two hundred and thirty thousand square foot building that's developed for um, life science. And um, through Vandegrift is on the market and has a lot of um, momentum going. So what, what are we doing here? Twenty twenty, keep the momentum, realize opportunity. Reel in all those fish. Um, it's just a quick um, background, um, you know, as you guys all know, you've been doing this for as long as I have and been with me this whole time. But you know, Boston suburbs are the epicenter of life science. Um, life science buildings are, you know, expensive to build. They're increased value equals increased tax revenue. Um, and there's a ton of demand in the market right now. There's three and a half million square feet of lab demand today. Uh, that's only growing um, faster. And what's the most important location decision is infrastructure and permitted space availability. Um, just, we've got a lot of questions on high-rise industrial. Is it the wrong name for this district? Absolutely. Are we, should we have a new name? Yes, we should, but you know, not wanting to upset the apple cart too much. Uh, it's still named the I H District as it was in nineteen seventy-seven, although we've made a lot of changes. We've. Taken down the height from one fifty-five down to um, ninety, setback similar to I G. And floor ratio um, can go higher, but directly based on the amount of lab square footage. As, and as discussed was um, laboratory buildings are less trip, trip generators than, you know, traditional office. And again, this whole thing, how do we diversify what we have for commercial space here in Burlington? Um, to different types of uses where people are coming to work. I mean, tradition, we have a lot of traditional office. There's a lot of people starting to work from home. We're seeing not necessarily, you know, them all kind of going out, but definitely some shrinkage. So how do we capture industry that's gonna be here, come to work, use the space? Um, and, you know, pay rents. So what are we looking at? We're looking at three clusters, Cluster A, Cluster B, Cluster C. Cluster A is the AMC Cinema and the Extended Stay Hotel next to the cinema. Um, that is a critical piece of property. Um, we're, we're, all three clusters, we're looking at a couple of different factors. What's there now? Is it, you know, what's the lifespan of that area? Um, is it an availability to make kind of a, a campus feel around these areas? So in some areas, there's a fewer newer buildings, but. In terms of the um, cinema and the extended stay, they're, you know, early nineties. Um, even before that, buildings, um, cinemas, I know people love to go to the movies. I'm not sure how long the lifespan of cinemas are gonna be. Uh, and the extended stay, already the property, it's, I don't know, we've had a lot of questions about it. I'm not sure if it's hit the market directly. But you know, what's the next phase? We have Keurig right across the street. We have Gutierrez with a permitted life science building already. You know, that could, that site alone is a key site for Burlington to reposition to, um, again, you know, reel in that big fish. Cluster B along Blanchard Road um, is seventy Blanchard, which is that kind of half moon shaped building. Um, kind of half moon glass building off the highway. Um, that was built in the late eighties. Seventy-six and eighty were built in the seventies and uh, seventy-eight was actually a newer build back in two thousand and twelve. Um, but looking at those buildings again for kind of a cluster campus type of environment. Um, Cluster C and Cluster B is owned by two property owners. Um, so again, the, a good cluster with not too many different property owners. Cluster C all owned by R J Kelly. Again, I already, um, kind of, they, they have some good uses in there, but the buildings are outdated. They're all nineteen seventies build. Um, again, just setting ourselves up for kind of that next chapter of what's happening here. But really, what? Why is it important to do right now? Um, again, I mentioned clusters, amenities, talent. Um, also, wait, let me go back. Do I have Northeastern on the last slide? Northeastern, down in the corner. Northeastern's a huge piece too, that links Northeastern talent to the rest of Burlington in this commercial corridor. Um, and just quickly back, like we have Burlington Mall Road, which is a very strong east-west corridor. Blanchard Road, kind of an older road, not looking to make it at all Burlington Mall Road, but. How can we improve the infrastructure on this roadway to really support existing infrastructure? When we, right now, we have. Um, flooding issues, there's no sidewalks, there's, you know, um, bike lane problems. I'll get into that. I'm kind of jumping around a little, but um, again, just as I started with the history, um, cluster, location, amenities, talent. Um, nineteen nineties sun micro system, you know, that was the first wave, software security, they clustered together. Um, and a lot of the times when we hear, um, when companies come in, the planning board asks why Burlington and it's. You know, so-and-so is here. So Sun made a decision. So all these other companies made this decision to come here. So we want to really start that. Um, not start, it's already started, but continue that momentum as to um, Burlington being a hot, hot place to be. Um, again, this link to Northeastern, Northeastern, this is the Northeastern Campus. Um, David Luzzi, who's the Senior Vice Provost for Research and Vice President, Northeastern's Innovation Campus. Um, you know, he's making partnerships all around the world. Again, just put Burlington Mass Innovation Center. Um, Innovation Campus here. And how do we link that, the important work that they're doing there to the rest of Burlington and Massachusetts? Um, again, why now? Um, opportunity and timing. Right now, um, as Melissa will, can weigh in as well. Um, Massachusetts again is doing kind of a planning for growth. They have a one-stop initiative program. Um, putting a lot of the growth, I mean, growth, the funding programs like the Mass Works Grant, which you benefited from enormously along Middlesex Turnpike. Um, to do a lot of the infrastructure work, as well as um, some of the funding that we just received for the M W R A connections. Um, but you know, to get that funding, it's what are we as a town doing? What are we, how are we taking steps to? Um, strengthen Massachusetts economy and core industries such as life science? What are the steps that we're making? To um, you know, a, attract business to try to part, create private, um, private um, public partnerships to leverage funding? I mean, I don't think anyone on this call wants Burlington to foot the bill to do all the improvements on um, Blanchard Wheeler Road. But I think all of us agree that that corridor is in much need of improvement. So how do we really leverage action to investment? Um, and we, we, I believe, we believe that, you know, taking these actions to rezone can really start. Opening that door and unlocking a lot of the investment that's out there. And never mind, you know, the infrastructure. Um, funding that, you know, potentially is expected through the federal government coming this fall. As I mentioned, it's, you know, the key to really unlocking this um, private-public partnership, solving um, one, most importantly, the bottleneck at Cambridge-Bedford, South Bedford intersection in Woburn. I know it's not in Burlington, but it is literally the bottleneck that causes all of the problems coming up South Bedford. And Blanchard, a lot of the issues that we hear from neighbors about cut-through traffic. Um, you know, again, it's to avoid that intersection. We've done study after study after study. We have traffic studies from every industry. That's come in there and it's that bottleneck, um, that's already on the transportation improvement plan. We really need to continue to push that effort forward. Um, and then many of the other issues, um, the flooding issue, sidewalks, bike connections. Um, and then we have this wonderful trustees property across um, along the corridor that, you know, how do we create better access? And attract um, people to it. Uh, this is a picture of all those things we can do. The bottom left is a picture of that intersection that's. I, I don't think we've seen these traffic lights since like sixties. This is the oldest traffic light in our whole, whole region. Um, right here, this is the second oldest one. I think they moved, they, there used to be like this, the, anyway. Older infrastructure that they, they've moved since. Um, anyway, um, there's been some comment. I don't know if any of you have heard it, but. Um, if we move to I H, oh my goodness, it's gonna create so much more development capacity. Um, and that what this show slides is you, what this slide shows, um, you can actually, you can go to a point five F A R. My point in this. Slide is we are already, are, are already so close to that cap. My point in this slide is we are already, are already so close to that cap of development. So what you were going to see is different development, but not necessarily additional development. So anyway, that was a question we keep getting, especially in cluster B. And cluster B is, is the one even closest to that 0.5, if not higher, for 78. So again, we're looking at repositioning, diversifying. And that's about it, just no vote, keep things status quo. The corridor will look as it is today for quite some time. Yes, vote, we're just really looking to unlock potential options along the corridor. And I do want to note, Mass Works or Mass Grant applications are due in June 2021 to at least start that process of understanding and planning, whether it's planning, funding, design work, or capital funding, all of those things there are opportunities for. And we would like to tap into those, those opportunities coming as soon as this June. We have already submitted a letter of intent, as you guys, I think, have seen that Melissa put together, for this corridor in terms of, you know, beyond notice, we will be submitting funding applications. And a lot of people have said to us, like, well, why don't we just do that? And then we'll do rezonings. It's really, it's kind of a chicken and the egg. It's what are we doing to do, change the corridor? And how are they going to help us get there? In terms of Northwest Park being rezoned to a planned development district with all of those different uses, were really the key to unlock a lot of that Mass Works Grant on Middlesex Turnpike, as well as the Summit and Millipore and all of that. So with that, that is the end of my presentation, so I will take questions.
Thank you, Ms. Casner. Kristin, do you want Melissa to chime in or is she here for answers?
If she would like to, I would love to hear her feedback.
Melissa, any insights to this?
Yeah, no, I think, you know, Kristin and I have been talking about this. And I know one of the kind of goals of the community when I came on was to enhance the life science cluster. You know, clusters, as Kristin said, is, you know, a special mix of talent, experienced developers, the regulatory framework, the research hospitals, the research institution that we have. So we have a lot of that here and trying to shape that over time. I think one thing to keep in mind, as Kristin kind of pointed out, was that, you know, the development potential is, is not necessarily in the FAR. It's a lot in the use. The IG to the IH allows for the use of life science to be kind of opened up and say, here, we can, you know, guide you if you are a life science entity. The landowners, the property owners will then kind of understand that, okay, now as a youth, we can guide a potential tenant here, a life science tenant here. I think as we go forward, you know, things that I've been thinking about that kind of go along with this is just how we're shaping this over time. It's not one and done, but it's an iterative process and how much density we need, how we shape the regulatory framework to achieve some of our public goals that were mentioned on that slide. So those are things we have to continue to chimp away at so that we can really get to that place-making. But this is a great start.
Thank you, Melissa. Mr. Segre, I have a quick question for you. This zoning article, this is on the warrant, are we going to vote on this now? Or do you want us to vote in this with the regular warrant?
Yeah, I think it makes sense based upon Kristin's presentation to provide a vote at this point.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that before we moved on. All right, thank you, Mr. Segre. Members of the board, I imagine everyone wants to chime in on this. Mr. Hogan, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kristin, Melissa, good evening. Back in the 80s and 90s, when I was a member of the Board of Health, we had these kind of discussions when that old, dirty industry that was up there was contaminating the groundwater. And we spent an awful lot of time trying to, to figure out how to clean that up, get rid of that, that old ugly industry. And we had to convince people that the next generation would be better. We had to deal with the fact that, yes, more people might be in the building, but we're going to use less water and it's going to be cleaner. And I think over the last 20, 30, even 40 years, we've seen how good that has been. Now we're talking about yet the next generation. I don't think we should fear this, we should walk up to it, we should embrace it as the next way to improve our surroundings and the industry and the business community. I'm all for this, I don't, you know, I don't know why I wouldn't be. But I'd be very proud to support this. Kristin, Melissa, thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Next, who would raise, like to raise their hand? Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I agree with Suckin Hogan. You know, I'm hard pressed to think of a reason not to support this, you know. And so I guess I'm just going to talk for a hot minute and ask a couple of questions. And I apologize for the minor rant going on. I think lab space is kind of perfect for Burlington right now, because in terms of, you know, overall impact of the community, it's lower than, you know, an office building, which is fantastic, in terms of, you know, people coming and going, when they're coming and going, all that, all that fun stuff. I love the fact that Northeastern is here, I love the fact that we're able to partner with them. I think that when you think about, you know, the economic impact of life sciences, you know, Northeastern, they're incubating and fostering, you know, students at varied levels who are trying to kind of kick their own thing off. And, you know, should they succeed in doing that, you know, they can, they can remain here basically at home, so to speak. And they can grow here, you know, they can, they can move from building to building almost. And, you know, readily find what they need, which is going to be huge in terms of retention of businesses. You know, when we, when we think about the waves that we've kind of experienced, let's just put out there into the world that we should be always looking for whatever that next wave is going to wind up being. I know we're very focused on what this wave is and capturing as much of that benefit for the town as possible. I think that's fantastic. And I wonder too, along that thinking, you know, if, other than Northeastern, it makes sense to think about an educational cluster of some kind. You know, would MIT want to have a small little, you know, branch out here? Would Harvard want to kind of set up shop out here and, you know, foster that thinking and that growth, which then in turn fosters the overall longevity of businesses here in town? So two questions coming out of that. One, and I know that, you know, Kristin, you said, we're kind of picking and choosing our battles. If we were going to name, rename IH, what would be renamed to? What's a, what's an appropriate term?
Kristin?
Sure, thanks. Well, a lot of people have thrown out a bunch of different things. I mean, the word innovation is like in 50% of them, but, you know, I'm not exactly sure what, you know, it's, it's very much to capture a lot of that new industry, the advanced manufacturing, additive, is it additive, additive, the 3D printing clusters we have, the medical device. I mean, we have so many things that are so great that's going on and benefiting us. And I don't want to just kind of name the district one thing or another. It's, what I can tell you is what it's absolutely not. It's not a high-rise building like 7 New England Executive Park or 700 District now. But what is it? I mean, I think, you know, I don't, we don't need to answer that question now. At some point, we're going to bring it forward. I would certainly welcome any suggestions, but it's definitely capturing, just as you said, the next, the net. How do we reposition? How do we diversify? What do we know for sure? We have too much office, it's not the correct name of the district. You know, just as Melissa said, it's iterative, like, you kind of take these steps each time. You can't, you know, you can't eat an elephant all in one bite. It just keeps going step by step, you know?
Just want to interrupt real quick, Melissa has to leave, so.
Yep, go ahead.
I want to thank her for helping out.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, I apologize, I'm happy to follow up with any questions. But I think just to kind of remind the board to align, like, the iterative process is that, you know, when we think of naming this, as we think of how this grows and how these clusters are formed, I think, you know, some of the recent funding and support that we've gotten from the state with mass development. And that process will help us engage in kind of the future of what, you know, these spaces also will kind of need and look like. And whether we want to kind of brand them, I think that has, you know, whether it's kind of a general around wellness, whether it's around added manufacturing, or if it's a little bit even more broad. But there's a lot of opportunity to kind of explore that going forward as well. So I need to excuse myself, sorry about that.
Thank you.
I'm just going to jump back to Nick, because he had the floor. Nick, anything else with Kristin?
No, I'll yield my time at that point, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, I think I can gauge the, the board's thinking right now, so I don't need to go on too long. I will say this, you know, ordinarily, we don't take a position on zoning issues. But I think in this, in this instance, we're addressing some potentially, potential improvement to some much-needed infrastructure along, in those areas, as well as, this is a continuing effort to grow our economic development program. So I think it would be nice to go to town meeting in May in unison with the planning board. I believe they, they took a position on that already, Kristin, correct? Did you, did they vote, planning vote favorable yet?
They haven't voted yet, only because I was missing two members at our last meeting. So we will be voting at the May 6 meeting.
Okay. But anyhow, yeah, I think it would be nice to go to town meeting and a unified body on this. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Morandi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I listen, everybody's already said everything, Kristin. This is, this is between you and Melissa, this has been a great, great asset for the town. It will be the final stages of improvement. So I can't see any reason why we should not approve this. And like Mike said, go right through with town meeting, with both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, both unified, both going in with a positive yes on this. This is fantastic, I think, to re-analyze that area.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Anybody else have anything before I have a few comments to make? All right, so Kristin, I too agree with all the other members, I think it's a great, long overdue. That area, it's been so overgrown and because it's so overgrown with brush and weeds, people use it as a roadway dumpster. They drive up and down, throw all this stuff out. It's the trash, it attracts trash. And the way I look at it is, if you look at where the area of Mary Cummings Park is, it was overgrown with reeds, we even, people were throwing the trash there. Well, now it's been improved, developed, it looks beautiful, and you don't see what you used to see there. So I think that'll also be another benefit. And you made an interesting comment about the flooding. And in warm weather, it's called flooding, but in the cold weather, it's called ice. And the roadway does have that problem. I know there've been some serious crashes down there. With that being said, I think we're looking to do an approval to support this zoning article and amend the zoning map and rezone the property to high-rise industrial district. Is anybody going to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman, before a motion is made, I've noticed that Patricia had a comment in the chat just around general public transportation infrastructure, if it'd be a welcome thing, whether it be MBTA routes or, you know, community-based shuttle infrastructure. I think, I mean, you know, for me, the answer is yes. You know, I think that, you know, before COVID, before pandemic times, as it were, you know, we obviously embraced, you know, as much of, as we did at the time. And, you know, COVID has certainly dwindled and shut down a great much, a great amount of it. And I hope that, you know, as we get beyond this virus, you know, we can reestablish, you know, smart thinking around transportation for sure. So I hope Patricia answers part of your question.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Patricia, is that good enough or did you want to chime in?
Thanks, I'd like to hear from Kristin to see if it would be included in any kind of grant application.
So pretty much the answer, absolutely. As we continue to work with these companies and Middlesex 3 Coalition to have shuttles, to increase all multimodal and just alternatives. We have some really nice bike connections and we have some really terrible bike connections along these corridors. However, we can do on, off-road, we've had a lot of conversations with the trustees as to try to make sure that they don't put so much into a conservation restriction that wouldn't allow us to do pedestrian and roadway improvements along this corridor. And also, I mean, MBTA wants to make sure they have safe and accessible routes. When you talk about flooding and ice, that's not the first thing they want to hear. So as we continue to improve infrastructure and the roadway and I think, but absolutely, you know, on every single application for the state, they're looking for, you know, how are you incorporating, you know, diverse housing? How are you incorporating? Sorry, I'm reading Patty's comment. Transportation and just different types of industries and especially core industries in Massachusetts. And I appreciate the selectmen, and one of the reasons, just as you guys have already said, that I wanted to come to this board is because you guys do control the roadways and a lot of the infrastructure and make a lot of those infrastructure decisions. And I think this is, this corridor is key for the next. I have a folder on my computer in all caps, N E X T, of like next and what we should be doing. And I think, you know, this is just something we should be certainly looking at. And I appreciate your support and hopefully more support as we look to design and planning, design and capital moving forward.
Thank you, Kristin. Okay, anything further? Does anybody want to make a motion? Yes, Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve this zoning article, amending the zoning map and rezoning property to the high-rise industrial district.
Okay, Mr. Segre, one quick question. Would it be approving or supporting this article?
Just a vote, vote to support is what it is, so.
Okay.
Then I change the word approval to support.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan. I just want to make sure, if they want to cross paths, you know, get in town meetings where, say, we approved it already. Well, okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Morandi. Okay, roll call vote to support this one article. Vice Chairman Priest.
Yes.
Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well, 500. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much, looking forward to working with you guys.
Nice presentation.
Thanks, hopefully town meeting likes it as well.
Okay, item 103, update on Sculpture Park. Vice Chair Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Sculpture Park found itself in a interesting position, one that was not anticipated in that someone came before the committee and wanted to donate a sculpture to the park. And so tonight, basically, I'm just going to take a minute to update the board, you know, hopefully answer some questions. And then the, so the Sculpture Park Committee is voting on this on the 4th of May. And then I would imagine that, you know, once their vote goes through, it would come back to us for an official approval vote. This is, this is a single addition to the Sculpture Park. It's been and had, will continue to be vetted through the Sculpture Park Committee, which has, you know, vetted all the sculptures before bringing them for the Board of Selectmen for final approval. And it will follow the same timeline, the same lifecycle as the rest of the Sculpture Park as we had voted on it back when we had. So it's not like, I know that we originally said, you know, a two-year time period. It's not like we put this sculpture in and it starts a new clock for this sculpture. The sculpture, you know, just picks up the time remaining, as it were. This is, this is being donated in full to Sculpture Park and the town. And it is another Dale Rogers piece. I'm actually going to share my screen so you can see what it looks like. Let me see here, I don't break the whole computer. Okay, can everyone see my screen? All right, so this is the sculpture, it's called Lovebirds. Like I said, it's a Dale Rogers piece. It will live on the existing site in between the police department and Grandview Tavern. I think it's adorable. But it is being, you hear the dimensions, it's six feet high by three and a half, just over three and a half feet wide by 23 inches deep. And yeah, that's, I mean, that's And, uh, yeah, that's, I mean, that's pretty much the update. Um, but I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions the rest of the board might have.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Um, anybody have a question on this, uh, item? Why don't you show your hand? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Sagorino, there's just an update, correct? No, no votes needed?
Uh, correct. I believe, uh, Selectman Priest will be bringing a vote forward in the future, once, once the plan gets finalized.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Uh, we'll move right on to the next item for discussion, Mr. Priest. Item one oh four, discussion about creation of a flagpole policy.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so again, I'll try to keep this, uh, brief, uh, but basically, uh, you know, over the years, we've had many requests, uh, through, uh, various, uh, parties, organizations, community groups, uh, that have wished to, uh, recognize, uh, you know, a marked day or, or a time period, whether it be, uh, autism awareness or, um, LGBTQ, uh, you know, month or, uh, you know, we all recently, uh, recently, it's been a while now, but we all recently attended, um, you know, the, um, uh, in, in, in Independence Day. Um, you know, there's a variety of, of folks who have said, you know, we'd love to, to raise a flag and, and commemorate, um, a, a certain thing. And so, uh, Chairman Tigges and I, you know, began to have some conversation around, you know, what made the most sense, if it was possible. Um, obviously, we do a lot of, uh, common lighting, uh, you know, light up blue for autism awareness. We recently approved, uh, uh, the Youth and Family Services, uh, green for, uh, uh, mental health awareness. Um, you, you, we kinda felt that there was an opportunity to, uh, consider, you know, actually giving folks an opportunity to raise, uh, raise an actual flag. Um, and I know that in the past, we've had conversations around the viability of this, the legality of it in terms of saying, you know, yes to a certain group, no to a certain group, uh, what have you. And so I started digging around into other Massa- Massachusetts communities, uh, who have flagpoles. Um, and, uh, after landing on a, on a couple, uh, most notably, uh, the town of Westford had a very, uh, thorough, um, policy around this. Um, I, part of the punt raised it to, uh, Chairman Tigges and, uh, town administrator Sagorino, uh, who had some conversations with Town Council around what a flagpole policy would look like for us here in Burlington, um, as well as what an application would look like. Um, and really, we wanted to try to cover as many bases as possible. Um, the takeaways are basically that, uh, the application covers everything you'd imagine an application would probably cover in terms of, you know, who, who the, who wants to raise a flag, when the flag needs to be raised, all the logistics around raising the flag, um, as well as, you know, uh, what the flag looks like, um, dimensions of the flag, uh, would be set in the policy, which is still draft. Um, and, you know, we as a board reserve the right to deny any applicant for any reason or no reason at all. Um, you know, so should we feel as though, um, you know, a flag not, uh, you know, aligned with the values of our community, uh, or, you know, may cause great offense, uh, to the community at large, you know, we do not have to, um, you know, say, say yes automatically. Uh, but in any case, uh, you know, the policy and the application have been submitted for your recommendation, uh, and, and thoughts. And I'll, uh, obviously, you know, any questions, happy to answer what I can.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Again, this is just, uh, opening it up for discussion for the board. I think, I know Sherri Ellis said she wanted to comment on this as well, so after the board members, uh, offer their comments, I'll see if Sherri wants to still talk, but, um, Selectman Hogan, anything?
Yeah, uh, you know, we've all, we've all mentioned this, and, uh, a lot of the most serious conversation began when we were all on the common for the, uh, Independence Day, seventy-third, I think, uh, anniversary of the Independence of, uh, uh, India. And they were so proud with this flag that they had. We had no place to put it up and, and show our support to them. So, uh, thank you, Nick and Jim, for, uh, moving this down the road a little bit. I, I support the idea. Um, uh, is this, if we, Nick, if we, well, whoever, uh, if we vote on this and then at some point after the process, uh, we realize that maybe the, the, the timeframe for announcing it or the timeframe for whatever needs to be corrected. We're not locked into the, to not being able to change anything, correct?
Yeah, I defer to, to Paul on this, but, uh, I, I imagine that any policy that we enact, we have the authority to amend, should we feel as though?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, uh, that's correct. Uh, Selectman Hogan, uh, we can amend it in the future. Uh, we can change it. They can eliminate it. Uh, we can't really do anything that's gonna bind on the hands of a future board. They would have the ability to, to change the policy, um, if they would wish to do so.
Okay, thank you. No, I support the idea.
Thank you. Yep, again, this, this, right now, it looks like just, I'm guessing it's just gonna be discussion for this meeting. And, um, you know, we've got a lot, a lot to look at, a lot to consider. Um, Selectman Runyon?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, um, you know, I, I like the concept. Um, I, I think it needs a little more discussion. Um, you know, right now, we're, we're still trying to determine, you know, wh- what the, uh, deficit's gonna be due to, uh, COVID pandemic. Um, so I know there's some costs associated with, uh, purchasing and installing and putting up a flagpole. Um, you know, th- there's a couple of other items up on the common there that I've been trying to address for years now. Um, you know, putting some sort of a, a, a sign, replace the, the sign at the corner of Bedford and, and Cambridge Street, where currently we've got a couple of rotten, uh, four-by-four posts over there. I've been trying for years to get funding to update that to a more modern, um, type of a signage area, as well as the, uh, we've got some, uh, World Trade Center still on the common. We've been trying to find funding, uh, to, uh, you know, add some seating area to that area as well. So, um, I, I don't, you know, I'd like to be able to address all of those items, actually. Um, and, um, wouldn't mind tapping the brakes on the flagpole until we have answers to some of those other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Anything else? Is that it? Okay, Mr. Morandi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I'm just looking at all the paperwork here on, on, you know, what we got, I brought backup on this. Uh, quick question. Uh, I think it's the third page, number thirteen, uh, letter A proposes a danger to public health or, or public safety. Um, I don't, I don't know about that. I don't, I don't know, I'm sure public health is, if the, if the, the string breaks and someone gets wrapped around their neck or something, that might be public health, but I don't know what, I don't, I don't understand that part of it. And I'm not against this at all. I just don't know where, where we would put it. Would, are we gonna put a brand-new flagpole in? Are we gonna, uh, pick these property in town that has this? Uh, will it be, um, at, at Simon's Park? Will it be? This, we said this earlier tonight, there's a lot of discussion on this, where it's gonna go, um, or what we're gonna do with it. Mr. Runyon has a great point with some of the other stuff that needs to be done on that common also. Uh, maybe we can bundle a lot of stuff in together with this. Uh, he, he has a, a thing with that, uh, the sign on, uh, Cambridge Street there. I got a thing with the gazebo. I think the gazebo is, uh, needs to be done over, just the outside of it. That's my personal thing. I think that's a, another thing in the, uh, that I call them the Twin Towers. Those, that needs to be done. So there's a lot of stuff to discuss on this, but I understand right now, we're just discussing a flagpole. I guess my biggest question would be, where would we put this if we were going to put a new flagpole in? So I ask, that's, that's my biggest question about this. And I am in support of it. I just don't know where, right?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, may I, um, chime in?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, yes, Joe, absolutely. That was a conversation that, uh, uh, Chairman Tigges and I had. Um, you know, is it in front of, you know, uh, the Youth and Family Services building? Is it in front of the town annex? You know, do we, do we keep it off the common, you know? Um, I think that, you know, if it's a policy that we're gonna enact, you know, not involving the Rec Department might be a way to go in terms of, you know, uh, handling it. Uh, but I, I think you're absolutely right. You know, more conversation needs to be had. Um, and I agree, Mike. I, I, I think that, um, you know, generally speaking, if we've got, you know, uh, common or, you know, uh, let's say town campus improvements that we're looking to make, um, you know, I, I have no problem holding the flagpole until we can kind of maybe group everything together and you do it all in one fell swoop. Uh, you know, once we kind of get finances stabilized, you know, considering everything that's going on. I think that from a policy perspective, we could enact the policy, um, you know, or maybe that's, that's ill-advised and, you know, I'll, I'll turn to Paul for that. Uh, you know, if we have a policy and no poll, you know, it could cause more problems. But, um, you know, from a policy perspective, you know, it, it could exist, you know, sans a poll until we get one. If we think that, you know, the timing's gonna work out on that, but, um, I agree. I, I think that we could, we could bring this back again to another meeting for more discussion before we even, you know, consider a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Uh, Mike, any follow-up? Nope. Um, I couldn't agree with you, uh, the board more, um, on everything that's been said. Um, again, this is open, this is putting it, uh, out there for discussion. Uh, lots of things, lots of options to look at. Um, Nick, I like that idea of looking at a holistic approach of looking at everything at once. Mike, I, I can't agree with you more. That sign on the corner, it, it's, it's doing, it's more detrimental than it is good. I, I mean, that's all I can say about that. So, uh, I won't say much more because you guys have already mentioned it. Um, I know Sherri asked if she could talk on this. Sherri, you out there?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Actually, no, I really didn't ask to speak on it. I was just concerned on the, um, agenda item that it said approval. And I really just wanted, um, the folks, um, the residents and everyone to be aware of what was going on before you approved anything. So I think the discussion was great. I, I appreciate the board members, um, wanting to have a whole, as, um, I think Mr. Priest said, um, a holistic view of everything that goes out on the common. And I think it's a great discussion that, um, should be had. And, um, if we can all see a copy of the policy as you go forward and it's a draft, it's a great idea. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Um, anybody else wanna make a quick comment about this that's in the meeting? And for those who, uh, have just the phone, to raise your hand, it's star three, and that'll let us know that you're raising your hand, if you're using a cellphone or a phone. Okay, nothing further on that? So we'll, uh, can you, can you continue that to a later hearing, that, that discussion, uh, to a later hearing, uh, late, later meeting, I'm sorry. Uh, item one oh five was a continued public hearing, and we've had a withdrawal. Uh, so basically, I think we're looking for a motion to close this public hearing and take no action. Mr. Sagorino, is that correct?
Uh, yes, it is. Uh, Chairman Tigges.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Hogan, uh, made the motion. Mr. Morandi seconded it. We will do a roll call vote to close the public hearing. Um, Mr. Sagorino, can we make, do we have to do a second vote to take no action?
No, I think by effectively by closing the public hearing and then, then just moving on, that, uh, that's my first time through with a withdrawal. So, uh, that would be how I recommend, just not vote anything other than to close the public hearing.
Okay, very good. So we'll do a roll call vote on, uh, to close the public hearing on this item. Uh, Vice Chairman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. So five zero, the closed up public hearing on this item. Uh, the next item on the agenda is one oh seven. It's a continued public hearing on an all alcohol license for Biceto Restaurants Burlington LLC. Mr. Vaughn, I saw you out there earlier.
Yes, um, good evening, Mr. Chairman. So how are you tonight? Uh, nice to see you. Uh, hello, board members. So, uh, for the record, yes, uh, as the board knows, I'm representing, um, Simon Property and, uh, also have been representing Fogo in connection with their, um, uh, restaurant that's coming into the Burlington Mall. So, um, this is moving forward. I, I know that, uh, the board's been, been patient on this, but, uh, I know that Betty did reach out directly to, uh, Fogo de Chao's council as well, Shanika Lee, and she did confirm that, uh, as I understand it, they are just finalizing a, um, a lease amendment, um, that reflects, you know, when they're gonna be opening, uh, sometime in early fall. As the board may obviously know, this was planned pre-COVID. This particular restaurant, we were before the planning board for zoning approvals for Fogo, that was granted. Uh, we had to come back then, more recently, to get some, uh, plan amendments, uh, because they, uh, altered their floor plan a bit. And, uh, that was approved by the planning board. So at this point in time, um, I can assure you it's moving forward. Um, and they have indicated that they're gonna be submitting the transfer application, uh, very soon. And, um, you know, I think that, you know, Fogo de Chao is certainly looking to become part of the, the Burlington restaurant scene and, and community here. So, uh, appreciate the board's, uh, patience. It's been a, a, a trying and challenging year, I guess, to say the least, in terms of the restaurant industry. And, uh, finally, we're at a point now where, you know, we're seeing the, the light at the end of the tunnel with, with everything going on, vaccines and, and everything else. So, um, but that's, um, that's, that's the, the update. And, um, you know, I can assure you from my conversations with both Simon and Fogo that it is moving forward. And I would like to think that the transfer application would be submitted over the next few weeks. So, because they're, they're looking to open this year, um, in fall of twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. It looks like we'll be, uh, looking to continue this meeting. Mr. Sagorino, what was, May twenty-fourth?
Uh, May twenty-fourth, uh, Mr. Chairman, is the next, uh, preferred date. Um, and then, uh, I guess we can, I'll defer to Betty on the actual time. I'm not sure she, what, what she already has pegged in for that date.
Mr. Vaughn, does the twenty-fourth work for you?
Um, yes. Well, I, I may not be present on the twenty-fourth. I'll, I'll, I'll make sure someone, so, someone is, is here to be able to update. And again, I'm, I'm very optimistic by, by then, the application would have been filed. So hopefully, it's, it's a unnecessary meeting, so.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Betty, uh, time on the twenty-fourth?
We do, I have a public hearing. It's gonna be really quick at six fifteen. Do you wanna put it right around that same time?
Yeah, that sounds, that's fine.
So at or after six fifteen?
Okay, at or after six fifteen on May twenty-fourth. I need a motion to continue this hearing to May twenty-fourth at six fifteen.
I'll make the motion to continue to May twenty-fourth, at or around six fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Uh, second by Mr. Hogan. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote to continue this hearing. Uh, Vice Chairman Priest?
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon? Let's see him.
Is he on mute?
Not sure. Selectman Morandi?
Yes.
Chair's a yes. So I guess we can go with four zero zero on.
Mike's back.
There he is.
I'll give you a yes, yes on that. Sorry about that. I jumped in at the door.
Alright, five zero zero to continue this, May twenty-fourth, at or after six fifteen P M. Um, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I believe you are also representing the next item, one oh eight, on the, uh, Waterville Business Development Ex-Golf.
Yes, uh, good evening again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Pleased to be before you tonight, uh, for the record attorney Mark Vaughn, uh, representing the applicant on this. And, uh, with me tonight is, is John Langivan, who, uh, I believe you all met before at the, uh, prior hearing that we had a couple of weeks ago. So just to, uh, remind the board again, we're here, uh, with respect to a request for a liquor license for a new ex-golf, uh, concept, restaurant concept that would be locating at the former Chuck E. Cheese space that's located at ten Wall Street in, uh, in Burlington. So, um, we kind of described in, in good detail at your prior meeting, kind of ex-golf's operation, their history. Um, exciting in that this is gonna be their, their, only their second location here in Massachusetts, with their first being out in Wayland. And John Langivan is a, um, a Lexington resident who, um, has, you know, roots in this area and is very excited about bringing this to, to the town of Burlington. So, um, I wanna thank both Selectman Morandi and Hogan for taking the time, you know, over the past two or three months to, you know, get acclimated and familiar with how ex-golf operates. And, um, you know, I know, asked a lot of good questions and whatnot. And actually, since our last meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, John Langivan was actually out in Michigan having direct training with ex-golf, um, relative to how they operate and whatnot. And, um, you know, I know that one of the questions that came up at the, uh, the last meeting that we had was whether there is perhaps an opportunity to distinguish between non-alcoholic beverages and alcoholic beverages in terms of having a, um, a cup that would be able to, you know, so that you know if someone's ordering, uh, alcohol, it's, it's apparent if someone is not. If someone is not, it's, it's apparent. And, um, out in, uh, Michigan, what they do at the location that John had visited is that they actually will serve all non-alcoholic beverages in a hard plastic cup. And then if someone's ordering beer or wine or a cocktail, then it would be in a glass. So we think that system makes sense, and John is, uh, happy to implement that here as well, just to provide, you know, more, you know, comfort that there's proper control and oversight that's, that's going on here. So again, just to remind the board, you know, all the staff here would be, um, you know, tip certified. Uh, there would be a golf pro as well that's on staff to provide lessons and, you know, that, that man or woman would be, uh, tips certified as well. And, um, uh, this is, um, you know, something that they, they take very seriously. I think John, you know, is, um, is committed to making sure that this runs appropriately and, um, you know, be able to properly control the service of alcohol. So, um, you know, they're very excited about the opportunity to open here and become part of the Burlington community. I think it's a different type of offering, as we talked about before. It's not your conventional, you know, Italian restaurant or steakhouse or something, but it helps fill a niche that I think is going to help grow the, the Burlington scene in general to be able to help, you know, diversify the, the offerings that the, the town has. So, um, with, with that, be happy to answer any additional questions or any, any comments that you all might have.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Uh, quick question to Mr. Sagrino. Is this the one we were waiting for a planning board vote on?
Yes, I think one of the primary reasons why we continued last time was the planning board had yet to, to finish, uh, reviewing uh, their end of it. Is that, is that, that's correct, Mark? Has that been taken care of?
Yeah, I probably should have mentioned that, right? Yeah, I'm sorry. So, yeah, we did meet with the planning board last, last week, I believe. So in between your last meeting and tonight, it has been approved by the planning board. So we, we needed to get special permit approval for the, the restaurant component.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, Mr. Sagrino. Uh, members of the board, um, I know we discussed this last time. Does anybody have any comment? Mr. Hogan?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mark and John, thank you for, uh, the time we've spent going over all of this. And, uh, John, I'm, I'm thrilled that, uh, uh, Ex-Golf, uh, also agreed, and you support the idea of just identifying the, the, the level of drinks so that, uh, it can be identified. But no other purpose, but just to make sure, and I'm, I'm thrilled that, uh, the hard plastic cups will be used for the, uh, non-alcoholic drinks, so we can identify that. We being whoever, you know, is in there making an, you know, an examination of the process, whether it be the police or, uh, any of the building inspectors. So I'm thrilled with that. Um, I don't, I won't even make that as a motion. I, you know, I take your word that, that, that will be the game plan. Um, I, I, I have a couple of things that I would like to add as motions, but I won't do it. I'll let some of the other members speak first, Mr. Chairman, but don't, don't close out anything until I've had a chance to, uh, add a couple of just minor things that we've talked about in the past. So, um, I'll hold off with anything else. I'll let some of the other members talk, but I, I'm in absolute support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Yeah, after the members speak, we also have to open up to the public. We'll have to do that. Um, Selectman Morandi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Uh, Mark and John, once again, thank you for all the time and effort that we put into this. Bob, we, uh, we went back and forth on this one quite a bit, but this is, uh, this will be a good, um, a, a good thing for the town. Uh, people will go down there, they'll enjoy it a lot. It'd be a great family place. Uh, I can't see people going in there and just, uh, going in there to drink without playing golf. Uh, I want to thank the planning board for approving this now that it's gone ahead. We have a different alcohol, uh, policy now. So I think that, uh, this whole concept will be a great asset for the town. People going down there enjoying it. So thank you very much, guys, for all your time and effort. Waiting here with Mr. Hogan's, uh, uh, what are those, what are those two words? I can't think of it. But anyway, I'm waiting for Mr. Hogan at the end of this. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Uh, Vice Chairman Priest?
No, sorry, no questions.
And Mr. Maran, uh, Mr. Runyon?
No, I'm good. Uh, Jim, thank you.
Okay. Any members of the public that are in this meeting would like to comment regarding this article, this item? Priest, Mr. Sagrino, you seeing anything?
Uh, there's no hands up in, in the chat, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure about, uh, Facebook.
Happy in the face, back to you.
Okay, well, no, uh, request for public participation on this one. Then, uh, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Uh, so moved by Selectman, uh, Morandi, seconded by Mr. Hogan. Okay, roll call vote to close the public hearing. Uh, Vice Chairman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Selectman Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. So five zero to close the public hearing. Now we'll be looking for a motion to approve. Mr. Hogan, I think you had one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I make the, uh, motion that we approve the all alcohol license, uh, for Waterville Business Development LLC doing business as Ex-Golf Burlington with indoor golf art simulator system at 10 Wall Street. Uh, and with just a, a two caveats. Um, when we talk about the golf pro being one of the managers, uh, who would be, uh, responsible, um, what I would like to do is, is ask that we make a motion that an assistant manager on site, when only the golf pro is there, uh, be the designate, the, the person who people would go to when the golf pro is doing his business as a golf pro. Um, I, I just think we need to have someone who's watching the store while the golf pro is watching the golf. Um, that would be one motion. Uh, and it, more, maybe more of a suggestion than a motion, uh, because their hours are going to be varied in the course of the year because of the interest in people, uh, maybe actually be outside golfing than inside. Their hours may change. Uh, they will never go past the town's hours, but at times they may close earlier. And I think we should at least just know when that occurs, uh, so that we know who's in there or who's supposed to be in there. And people aren't going in just to drink and have some, uh, wings or whatever, uh, because they can't. So, uh, so if we, if we have that information, th- those are the only two caveats. The first being a motion, the second being a very strong suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Sagrino, how would we incorporate those into the motion? Any thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm willing to say this is probably a little bit more like, uh, an amended motion to approve, so similar to, um, you know, last week with the small cell, you probably want to have some discussion on the amendments, uh, with the other board members and, and uh, get that voted on first, and then, uh, you can decide what, uh, if that's the new motion.
Okay, my question was where the original motion came from Selectman Hogan, is it an amended motion or is it a first time of, uh, 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 motion?
Uh, the way I heard it was Bob was making the motion with the caveats, um, in it already. So that would be Bob's motion uh, for, for discussion.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, um, so look, and I, we did talk about this as well with, with, uh, Selectman Hogan too, about the assistant manager, you know, acting as, you know, manager when the golf pro is there, you know, doing his thing. We don't have any issue with that, you know, um, and John Langivan, please chime in and correct me. I mean, you're actually going to be the one running the business, but y- y- you know, my understanding is you, you don't have any issue with, uh, you know, having an assistant manager kind of designated, you know, when the golf pro is there, uh, acting as, as manager, so to speak. And certainly if the board wants us to, you know, keep, uh, you all apprised of, you know, kind of the hours and, and when they change, we're happy to do it. Uh, you know, I, we're, you know, going on record saying all that now. I, I, I don't know if you feel that you, that you need to incorporate it, you know, as, as caveats or conditions, but, you know, certainly John is, uh, you know, committed to, you know, doing those things as, as well as the plastic, you know, cup element as well. But John, I mean, you can chime in if I'm mischaracterizing anything.
No, I, you know, we're, we're, I'm happy to incorporate those measures. Um, and, and Selectman Hogan, if, if this is something that would make sense, I, I do plan to have, uh, let's call it an escalation protocol, if you will, to make sure every server not only understands how to handle any liquor-related situation, but also knows when to escalate and who to escalate to. Um, and I'm personally going to be part of that escalation protocol, um, you know, where I, you know, do plan to spend a lot of time, although not, not a hundred percent of the time in the store. Uh, but, you know, I only live 10 minutes away. Um, and certainly if there are ever going to be any issues that require escalation, um, I, I will continue to be directly part of that escalation protocol.
Thank you, John. Uh, Mark, I'm just going to jump to the board. Uh, Mr. Morandi, you have any comments regarding, uh, Selectman Hogan's amended motion?
Well, I think the first one is, is fine. I think the second one is a, is a good suggestion. So I think if he was to amend the first one, that would be great. And then the second one, it's a great suggestion to let them know what the hours are. Um, Mr. Vaughn's already gone on record, said he will do that. So.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Runyon, you there? No? Okay. All right, um, so no more comments on the amended motion. Bob, did you want to present that again, just, uh, clean it up a little?
Okay, hold on one sec. All right, um, I would like to make the motion that, uh, we approve the, uh, where am I? Uh, forgive me. The all alcohol, the all alcohol license for Waterville Business Development LLC doing business as Ex-Golf Burlington with indoor golf art simulator system with the motion also that, uh, when the golf pro is the only other manager there, that someone, not an extra person, but someone within the, the staff be designated as an assistant manager for the, for the spontaneous need for a manager to make a call on something. And, uh, yes, the suggestion about the hours I would like to keep as a suggestion. And I, and I, and I take Mr., I, I take John at his word about the cups, so I won't even make that as a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Uh, Mr. Sagrino, is that good enough for the, uh, uh, a motion?
Yeah, I think we just want to check with Betty to make sure she's got, um, what she needs to, to get it properly into the record.
Betty?
Uh, yes, thank you very much. I just didn't, um, get the exact times that you discussed.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I just didn't get the exact times that you are selecting.
You mean the, the times that they're going to be open?
Opening with time in the morning and closing with time at night. Yes.
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't make that part of the motion because, um, when they open in a couple of months, it may be different than it is today. So they will notify us at that time.
Uh, we could, you are allowed to be open from 11:00 in the morning and serve until 1:00. With last call at 12:30. That's just standard, um, times for, uh, alcohol licenses.
And, and John, and John knows that, and I don't believe he's indicated that they'll ever come closer to maxing those hours out.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Hogan made that motion with a, I guess I'd refer to it as a condition, um, and a suggestion. So I have a second to that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morandi. Okay, roll call vote to approve, I didn't want to wait, the all alcohol license for 10 Wall Street Ex-Golf. Um, Selectman, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Selectman Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. So five zero zero, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you very much. I know that, uh, as, as a golfer, I'm excited about them coming, and I know John Langivan's very appreciative of, uh, all the time that you all have taken to, to review and, uh, you know, make sure that this is a success. So thank you very much.
I, I think with the number of golfers I know in town, you're going to be very successful.
And I want to, I want to thank Betty too. Betty has, uh, been very helpful for the process to both John and me, and does a, a great job. And so thank you, Betty, for, you know, dealing with our phone calls and emails and everything. So, uh, appreciate it.
What we're here for. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. If we had to thank Betty every time she did something for us, we'd have five hour meetings.
Mr. Chairman, may I just also, I just want to chime in that when we first started this conversation, there were a lot more questions than there are tonight because it is new. And both John and Mark, um, I, I, I agree that we all learned a great deal going through this process. So I appreciate their cooperation on this. Uh, because we're down to just a suggestion and a motion compared to a lot of the questions that existed when John first came to us. So thank both of you for this.
We work well together. Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you.
Okay, item.
And, and if I could, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, add my thanks to, uh, the committee, to, to Betty as well. Uh, I, I really appreciate your support throughout this and glad we're able to work through the issues. And I'm really excited about opening up in Burlington and, and seeing all of you there. And, uh, I, I'm delighted that, uh, that this is going to happen. So thanks very much.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mark. Uh, okay, next agenda item is 110. We, uh, we have a budget for 2022 that needs to be approved. Mr. Dinesio?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll just start it off. Uh, I think we had one last budget, uh, for the retirement assessment, uh, that the board had had a question on the last time. Uh, so that will be the final budget we need you to approve, uh, heading into town meeting. So. John, John is here to answer any further questions.
Vaughn, did you want to just give a quick rundown on that, that item, that budget?
So the last, the last, uh, item, as Paul said, was, uh, the Middlesex Retirement Systems, uh, annual payment. That amount is $11,757,449. It was tabled from the last meeting so that the, uh, town council could opine on a question from a member, and they have done so, and said it was appropriate for anyone that chose to to vote on this line.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you, John. Uh, members of the board, anybody have a question on this before we vote? Raise your hand? Oh, okay. Well, that being the case, I will take a motion to approve, uh, this budget that John referenced for the fiscal year 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, mo- motion made by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. Runyon. A roll call, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Hogan?
Yes.
And Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi? Mr. Morandi?
Am you? Yes.
Okay, and the chairman's a yes. So five zero zero on that item. Okay. Item 111 is the, uh, Tom E. Warren articles. Uh, what I think we could do is like we've done in the past. I'm going to have, uh, turn it over to Mr. Sagrino. And if anybody wants to hold and, and or discuss any one of the articles, please note so, and we'll hold and discuss. And those that aren't held and discussed, we can vote in one vote. Betty, are you good with that?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, in that case, Mr. Sagrino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just as a note, I will be, um, listing out, um, the articles that the board would typically vote on, on here, but you certainly can take a position on additional articles that you may not have in the past if you, if you wish to do so. Uh, but I'm going to come down with the list of, of the ones that we would typically ask you for a vote for. We'll start from there. Uh, first item of note is that, uh, Articles 14 and 16 are being po- postponed.
Okay.
Okay, so starting at the top, uh, Article 3, I'll read through each article. Uh, Selectmen can, um, yell out if they wish to have a hold, and then we'll go back to those at the end. So Article 3 would be, we'd be asking you for a vote on the budget in its entirety. Uh, you've already voted individually all the pieces of, of our departments that report to you. Uh, but this would just be a vote of support for the, uh, the budget in its entirety. Uh, Article 6, fund, uh, the town's revolving, uh, accounts. Okay, from Article 7 is the Capitol Warren articles. So we have, uh, Item 7 dash 2, uh, the DPW Vehicle Replacement Program. 7 dash 3, uh, DPW, uh, Drainage Repair Stream Cleaning. That's an annual, uh, request for funding. Uh, 7 dash 4, uh, DPW, uh, Sewer Pump and Variable Frequency Drive Upgrade. So that's an upgrade to one of our sewer pumping stations. 7 dash 5, uh, another pump, the Mill Pond Pump. Um, 3, uh, Variable Frequency Drive and Control Panel Box. Uh, I believe this is the pump, uh, that we utilize. Uh, I believe this is the pump, uh, that we utilize to take the water, uh, from the Shawshin River and get it into the Mill Pond. Uh, Item 7-6, uh, Partridge Lane Pump Station Force Main Design. Uh, that would be the engineering design, uh, as part of our program to rehabilitate our sewer pumping stations. Uh, we've done a good job with this over the past several years, and, and, uh, there's still, uh, a few more that we need to get caught up on. Uh, Item 7-7 from Public Works is the Library Roof Repair Job Replacement. Uh, 7-8, uh, Department of Public Works, uh, the demolition of town property, uh, the carpenter house. Uh, just so the board knows, uh, we're just going to update the board on that one, and we're going to do a little bit more work on that, and we'll probably end up withdrawing it. But we could talk about that one at the end. Uh, 7-9, Fire Apartment, uh, Lexi Paul Policy and Training Solutions is a software product, uh, that we're looking for efficiency in streamlined operations. Uh, Fire, 7-10, a fire, uh, administrative vehicle replacement. Uh, we'll skip over the recs, skip over the school, uh, we go down to the Board of Selectmen. There's been a request from the Historical Committee for a shed. Uh, we can, we can certainly talk about that, um, in further detail. Item 7-19 is also a Selectmen article, which was, uh, something we postponed from last year, which is the improvements, uh, to the 9/11 Memorial, um, out, out on the Common. Uh, so we had hoped to put something in place by the 20th anniversary of 9/11, so we'll have to, uh, if town meeting were to approve this funding, we'll have to jump on this one pretty quickly so that we have, um, have that area, uh, in shape, uh, by the fall. Uh, Article number 8 is Chapter 90. It's simply the town, uh, accepting the money that the state's going to provide us for roadwork. Article 9, MWRA, I, I Debt Service. Uh, over the years, the town takes, uh, 0% loans, uh, from the MWRA so that we can make repairs to our sewer system to prevent, uh, water, groundwater, and, uh, other types of infiltration from getting in there. So this is the payback on the loans, uh, which comes from money that we collect, uh, when people, uh, tie into the sewer system. So it's of no cost to the general bu- general fund budget. Uh, Article 10 is the vote to authorize our Sewer Enterprise Fund. Uh, Article 11 is an annual transfer, uh, to the Water Stabilization Fund. Uh, we typically, um, take money out of the water rates to fund the MWRA project, set it aside in a separate fund, and then we ultimately take some out to balance out the budget. Uh, Article 12, um, is a borrowing article. Um, we need to begin the process of replacing our public safety, uh, communications equipment. Uh, believe it or not, uh, we last invested in the system in approximately 10 or 11 years ago, and, uh, requires a significant amount of replacement to some, uh, aging equipment that wasn't replaced at that time. Obviously, uh, communications of utmost importance, importance in, uh, public safety. Uh, Article 13 is another borrowing, uh, for our typical every other year water main replacement program. So every other year, we try to invest in, one year we do roads and sidewalks, and the following year we do water mains. Okay. Uh, Article 15 is, uh, the Public, uh, Peg Cable Access Enterprise Fund. Uh, that's the mechanism for which we, uh, provide, uh, we receive the, uh, funding from the cable companies, and we provide it to BCAT so that they could provide our public access television for us. Article 18, uh, we, we put in for an article, um, to, uh, provide additional funding for small cell review. Uh, as the board knows, we just went through our first, uh, small cell installation. Uh, we also feel as though, um, there will be a desire from, um, the Small Cell Committee to want to provide, uh, some funding so that the town can, uh, randomly, if we wish, test these, uh, installations to make sure that they are still operating, um, as they were promised. Article, uh, we don't have that one ready, but, uh, uh, Article 23. Um, as you may be aware, we did receive a grant, uh, to complete the Terrace Hall Sidewalk, uh, where the town had previously approved funding for that, uh, through this old warrant article. And what we're requesting is that the town repurpose those funds that we have replaced with a grant to complete Terrace Hall, uh, to, uh, do a sidewalk on Winter Street. And, uh, John could tell me if I missed any. Uh, I figure the board may want to discuss Article 30 as well, as it relates to the Board of Selectmen. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. You're on mute.
Uh, Mr. D'Nizio, did he hit them all, did he, or did he miss any?
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. Okay.
Missed them all?
Um. So. Start, I, I, Paul, just jump in if I, uh, mess this up, because it's my first time doing it this way. I'll meet me doing this. Should I go write down the articles and ask if, if they want to be held, or should I ask, should I poll the members to see if they want, what articles they want to hold? Mr. Morandi?
I thought when Mr. Sagrino was going over the articles, we were going to say hold if we wanted to.
Yeah.
And no one said anything, so we didn't.
All right, so no one said hold on anything?
Right.
Yeah.
We were supposed to say hold at that point. So you're not, you're just going to repeat yourself, which we should have said hold at that point, which I thought was what we were doing.
Okay.
I did too, yeah.
I thought, I was looking at the list, I wasn't watching the screen, so I didn't know if anybody held anything.
I don't think no one held anything.
Okay, then that's good. That's a good thing. So, uh, nothing being held. Uh, does, does anyone want to make the motion to approve the warrant articles as, uh, mentioned by Paul Sagrino?
I will make that motion to approve warrant articles motion, uh, mentioned by, uh, Paul Sagrino.
Okay, Mr. Morandi made a motion, seconded by Mr. Priest. Roll call vote to approve the articles mentioned. Uh, Vice Chairman Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Runyon?
Uh, he has with a no on, uh, Article 30.
Okay, well, I think we're going to discuss that separately, Paul?
Uh, whatever the board wishes, we can, we can discuss all of these separately.
Would you like to discuss that?
I, I don't, I, I've, I've made myself pretty clear where I, I stand on Article 30. I'm, I'm opposed to Article 30.
Okay. Um, Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Okay, chairs are yes, so all those are 5-0-0 except for the Article 30, which is 4-1-0. Mr. Runyon, uh, did not approve. Okay.
Could anybody ask John a couple of questions? That would, uh.
Uh, he's on a hundred percent too, so there's no need to ask questions, I guess. All right. Uh, Article 1, uh, sorry, Mr. Morandi?
Yes, John, what time we be hitting the golf, um, Ex-Golf? Who wanted to ask a question?
Uh, I will add that there may be, uh, a need to vote a couple more articles. We're hopeful that we will have, um, the war, the articles to fund the open, uh, contracts, uh, before town meeting.
Thank you, John. Joe, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, moving on to the next agenda item, 112, discussion on some subcommittees. Vice Chairman Priest, Diversity Equity Inclusion.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, so this and the next one, I've been working, uh, with, uh, Selectmen's, uh, Runyon and, uh, Tickets respectively. Well, Tickets and Runyon respectively. We'll start with, uh, Diversity Equity Inclusion. Um, and I'll share my screen so that everyone can see the draft version of, um, this formation doc that we're putting together. Um, and obviously this is up for discussion. Got this right, here we go. Let me break the internet, everybody. Okay, can everyone see my screen? Yeah, all right, I'll take it. So first up, uh, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. So obviously, um, you get, um, the recent hiring of, uh, the Diversity Equity, uh, Inclusion, uh, Director over the school side, and, uh, the, uh, Equity Coalition being formed as a massive community endeavor. Uh, you know, uh, feel as, as though it's, it's incumbent upon, uh, the Board of Selectmen to tackle this from a, from a town perspective. Uh, and so what you're seeing here is basically admission statement, uh, proposed composition, uh, term limits, obviously schedule and recommendation reporting, this TBD, a charge, and then, uh, I had dug up some, uh, resources for, uh, for the Subcommittee to begin with, uh, as well as for the, the board to kind of peruse, uh, as it were. But I'm just going to kind of read this, uh, into the record, so to speak, and, uh, then we can discuss. So in alignment with the Select Board's mission statement, it is the mission of the Subcommittee strive to recognize and celebrate the diversity of our community while ensuring that all people, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, education, disability, age, sexual orientation, or gender identity, and socioeconomic status are represented and valued. You get a difference is not to violence, but rather strengthen us. Composition, I'm thinking, uh, two Select Board members, two folks from the Equity Coalition. Uh, obviously, the Diversity Equity Inclusion, uh, Director, Mr. Porch, uh, from the schools. Either two town meeting members or two at-large members. I wasn't quite sure how we were feeling about, you know, who should be included. Obviously, you know, I think when folks hear about this from, uh, the community, there might be more, uh, level of engagement. I think someone from the police should be represented as well as someone from Youth and Family Services, as those are two of our departments that interact with, uh, the, the, the population, uh, the most. And then the initial charge would be to evaluate and develop framework for DEI Subcommittee, uh, from which several strategic initiatives and actionable items can be developed or presented to the Select. So presented for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Hogan, anything on this?
Um, I, I didn't receive anything. Was this sent out to us?
Do not know if I got it to Betty on time. So it may not have been.
I got it because Nick emailed it to me.
Okay, no, I just, I was just curious, I just didn't see it.
I'm sorry, it was not in, in the packet. Wasn't received to the packet in time.
Okay, Betty, don't worry about it.
That's my bad, Betty.
All right, anything on, uh, at the discussion at this point, Mr. Hogan?
No, not right, not at this point, no. Are we looking for a vote tonight, Nick, or is this just an update?
Uh, no, 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 I don't think this is, no, this is just, uh, again, another draft to, to get the ball rolling with regards to DEI. Am I, uh, correct, Nick?
Yeah, absolutely. This is, this is purely for discussion, uh, general thoughts. Obviously, you know, I'll, I'll get these documents to Betty so she can circulate to the board, and then we can, you know, uh, maybe discuss further, uh, at our next meeting. You just want, you know, to make sure, I think, you know, like anything, right? You, you're looking at it here, um, and, you know, you're doing it. Now, this is an opportunity for me to step back and for you all to see it for the first time and react to it, make sure we, we've got the right composition of the Subcommittee that we feel as though we're aligned in terms of mission statement, charge, and all that great stuff, so, uh, purely discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, um, just for discussion, Nick, uh, have you talked to the folks at the school department to see if it's okay for us to tap into the new diversity, uh, Chairman? Uh, or is he going to have an awful lot to do just getting his own feet wet, uh, at this time?
It's a great question. I haven't reached out yet. Again, this was just an initial thought that I had in terms of trying to unify what the school's doing with what, you know, the town may want to consider. Uh, and, you know, it may be that, you know, Mr. Porch's, uh, you know, uh, plate is in fact probably too full, and that we may just want to invite him to select meetings for conversation. But worth, worth reaching out and asking.
Yep, okay. And if not, we should talk about who might be a good alternative for us to have as a resource.
Absolutely.
Some Youth and Family Services or, uh, the Mental Health Specialist who works at the Police Department. Just throwing those out as, as discussion items.
Okay, that, that's the whole intent of it, is to get this discussion rolling and, and tune up, tune this, uh, get this committee, uh, fine tuned and whatnot. Uh, Bob, anything else before we move on to?
No, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Runyon? Mr. Runyon?
Somebody's at the door.
Okay.
No, no, I'm fine, no questions, no questions.
Okay, uh, Mr. Morandi?
No questions.
Okay, uh, Nick, Nick, my only thought was I wouldn't want to restrict it to just town meeting members because you may have someone in, in the community that wants to participate, but if they're not an elected town meeting member, they, they would be on the list, so to speak. So maybe one town meeting member, one at-large, or, or maybe even more at-large from the community, since that's a larger percentage of, of people.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, we could even change it to like, say, three at-large, and that could include someone from town meeting, and there's no reason why we'd be restricting from that point. So Mr. Hogan's handling.
Okay, Mr. Hip, Mr. Hogan?
Uh, uh, yeah, I just, whatever the compilation is, I'm sure we'll work it out. But I think we should have some kind of a cap on it. I don't, I, I, I think if this gets too big, uh, we won't get anywhere. Uh, because we've seen in the past when we've had large groups of people on a topic, it, it just gets bogged down.
Right. All right, so my, my thought would be if you have any thoughts on the committee as presented by, uh, proposed committee by, by Nick, or if you have any, um, suggestions to let, email, uh, Nick individually, and we can bring this all back together for a full discussion. Is that good, Nick?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and like I said, after we close out tonight, I'll make sure that I get both these documents to Betty so she can circulate them, and, uh, you gentlemen can take a look, uh, and that way you can respond with a, a, any feedback you got from that one.
Okay, I know Sherri made a comment, I only saw her for a brief second. Did, uh, Sherri, you want to speak on that? Sherri, uh, Ellis?
Oh, thanks, I was just giving you some suggested people to think about for the committee, human resources, things like that, so.
If you don't mind, just send it to Nick, and he'll, he'll, uh, he's taking the reins on this one.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Um, okay, we'll move on, um, again, this is for discussion. It's the first time we're seeing it, not, well, it's being presented, I should say. And, you know, we'll, we'll fine tune it after this. Uh, Nick, Transportation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, again, you know, I think, you know, in the past, we've had, you know, other subcommittees kind of trying to tackle this as a piece of something, whether it have been the Beeline, you know, Subcommittee, or, uh, you know, the 3A, you know, uh, or like, you know, I, I, I'm sure even before, you know, um, anything to my knowledge, right? Just, you know, I, I think that transportation in town has been growing as fast and as furious as we have as a town, obviously, as a, as a major part of the infrastructure. After having attended, uh, town meetings, Transportation, uh, Committee, you know, and kind of chatting with them about it, it seemed very pertinent, uh, to create our, our own Subcommittee and really kind of lead the charge. You know, gathering the voices, listening to the studies, and all that great stuff. So, again, I'm just going to read this for the record, uh, this is, uh, again, just for discussion, um, and will be sent, uh, to Betty to circulate to the rest of the board. Uh, so a Transportation Subcommittee, our mission statement, to lead the development of integrated efficient transportation systems and creation of sustainable policies and regulations that support the town or branch of strategic efforts as it relates to economic and social development. Composition, two Select Board members, one Planning Board Member, two at-large community members, joining bylaw review member, Economic Development Director, Planning Director, Police Department Member, and DPW and/or Engineering Member. To, to Selectman Hogan and, uh, Runyon's, uh, concern about a large, uh, this would be a, a big one, but it touches so many things. You know, I, I, I'd be curious, as a part of discussion, how we kind of get it down. Again, you know, term limit, three years, uh, appointed by the Select Board recommending, uh, reporting and scheduled TBD, charge, research current issues, concerns with transportation at key locations within Burlington, develop a strategic multi-pronged plan that aims at addressing a formation issues. Said plan should be built in a phased approach, taking into account economic development, Burlington's master plan, A DOT integration, work with all necessary parties, stakeholders at local and state level to achieve outcomes. And much like the DEI one, uh, there are some resources here, uh, one of which you've seen, the, the Town Meeting Presentation. And then, uh, if you haven't, uh, there are a couple, uh, studies that I, I either pulled from, uh, the state's site, or, uh, this was a recent one that, uh, posted to us.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Any quick discussion on the, um, this, this committee, the Transportation Committee? I can't see, I can only see Mr. Hogan, I can't see the others, so that's why I'm calling on you.
Mr. Runyon raises his hand.
Okay, Mr. Runyon.
Yeah, thank you. I, I don't see on your composition, or do I? COA, COA is basically running the program right now, so I think they need to be included for their, their feedback will be crucial to that committee. Okay, so you have, Pencilsman, thank you.
That was my thought exactly, Mike. Mr. Morandi? Again, I can't see him, so if he's got his hand raised.
He's saying no.
All right, very good. All right, Nick, thank you, again, anybody with, if you have any members, if you have suggestions regarding this, send them to Nick. As far as, just, I concur with Mike, I was going to suggest a COA member, but just send any thoughts or suggestions to Nick on this, committee will, will move forward on it. All right, Nick, you're done. Small cells, well, I met with, Mr. Sagorino, myself met, because as he stated, we've had our first application and it's in the works, and we want to take kind of a lessons learned approach. We did have a rather large small cell committee to formulate the policy application and aesthetic standards. But now that we've gone past our first application, it needs to, the policy needs to be tweaked a little. So I think Paul and I will sit down and we revitalize the small cell committee at a smaller level because we don't, I don't think we need that entire group, because that entire group created this, and we just want to fine tune it. So we'll make a smaller group to look back at our past approval for the Mall Road location. Both Mr. Maxson and our attorney have sent in, I'm sorry, Attorney Don Agrewa has sent in some suggestions that they saw regarding our last, first application, and we'll try to get those incorporated in. The biggest one being having an applicant pay for the pair review, as opposed to the town paying for it. But we, well, Paul and I will sit down, get that committee going and fine tune as needed. Mr. Sagorino, anything extra on that?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I think we all agree, we learned a lot during the, the small cell process, and I think we're all a little bit better prepared for the next time around. The committee did a great job into putting us into that strong position that we're in. But I think that, you know, there'll be a lot more to learn in the upcoming year as we have a few more of these things. And, you know, we also have a requirement for them to come back to us in a year. So I think there's, there's still a lot more input that we can get and a lot more fine tuning to the design regulations. And I'm happy to see this committee go forward, you know, once we fine tune it a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Subcommittee reports, Vice Chairman Priest.
I think a lot of my subcommittees have been talked about tonight, it's cultural, economic development. I'm just going to pass.
Trust me, we didn't plan that, did we?
Well played, everybody.
Okay, Mr. Hogan?
No, I'm offset.
Okay, Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just quickly. The Board of Health is holding their annual spring household hazardous waste collection, and that is this coming Saturday, May first, eight thirty to noon at the Francis Wyman School. COVID nineteen protocols will be in place, please, please wear a mask and remain in your vehicle. Very quickly, a couple of items not to bring with you. Do not bring appliances, television sets, construction equipment such as shingles and siding, et cetera. No, no car tires or medical waste. Items you can bring with you include antifreeze, brake fluid, engine oil, car batteries, old propane tanks, old fertilizer, maybe some pool chemicals if you have leftover from last year. Their website is pretty inclusive, if you, if you're not sure, I would suggest you visit the Board of Health website for more detailed information. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon, Mr. Morandi.
I have nothing tonight.
Very good. And my only Subcommittee was the small cell for tonight, so I'm done as well. Mr. Sagorino, Town Administrators Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say thank you to the Public Works Department. As the board is aware, we had a major, major sewer blockage on Middlesex Turnpike that took over a week to repair. And the pipe was about twelve feet down and the groundwater was very high at the time, so it was a very, very difficult repair. They worked on it around the clock, Sewer Department with assistance from the Highway Division as well as outside contractors, they were finally able to get it almost a week later from the initial break last Friday to finally be completely repaired. So great work was done by the department in, in handling that issue. And, you know, just as a, a public service announcement, cooking grease and, and wipes really do a number on the sewer pipes. So the blockage, I'm sure they have pictures of it that we'll probably be seeing at some point, but it was blocked pretty solid. So we would just urge residents to just be cautious, cautious of that. And particularly the addition of the new disposable wipes is causing us a lot of problems. The cooking grease has always been a problem, but the wipes with the cooking grease is really problematic for Public Works and they did a great job in handling that, a very, very difficult repair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Any old business, new business? Citizens Time, do we have anybody for Citizens Time?
Yes.
All right, Sherri.
All right, thank you. I, I appreciate being acknowledged. So I'm here tonight at Citizens Time to speak about Citizens Time as an agenda item. I've heard from many on the issue, and I've spoken directly with several of you in the past, and I've also commented publicly over the course of the last few months about the board's decision to move Citizens Time from the front of the agenda to the very last item. And in, so in being responsive and respectful to Burlington residents and to Burlington business partners who wish to address the board for any reason, and in the interest of better communications, I'm respectfully requesting that Citizens Time be returned to the beginning of the Board of Selectmen's agenda. In addition, I think it would be beneficial for Citizens Time listed as the first order of business on all the boards and committees' agendas, and that could become a townwide policy. And if there's any concerns about, you know, delaying agenda items or lengthening the times of the meetings, there are mechanisms that can be put in place to control the length of the detail, the length and detail of the items brought forward. So I appreciate your time to speak on it, and I'm asking that, you know, Administration Board consider discussing this at your next meeting, and respectfully asking to bring it forward to the beginning of the agenda again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. Anybody else in the public? Nick, Paul, Betty, not seen any? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
All right, made, made by Selectman Hogan, seconded by Selectman Runyon. Okay, roll call vote to adjourn, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
No. Oh, yes.
And the chair is a yes, you're overruled. Five zero, Betty, you're two zero.
Always wanted to do that.